It's 6 o'clock. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I am Maggie Elliott. I'm serving as chair this evening. We have with us tonight Wade, Benning, Davies, Miller, and Townsend. Quell Horst is absent. Is there anyone here to speak on an issue that is not on the agenda tonight? No? All right. We'll go ahead with a comprehensive plan item. Case number CPA-002. Location 611 Greenwood Drive, former Roosevelt Elementary School. Anne, is it you?
Thank you, Chair. Anne Russett, Neighborhood and Development Services. As the Chair mentioned, this is a request to amend the comprehensive plan for the property at 611 Greenwood Drive. This would be a change from the public designation to a multifamily designation. Here's a photograph, an aerial photograph of the subject property. To the south is West Benton Street. And to the north is Greenwood. Here's the zoning map. The current zoning is Neighborhood Public or P1. The surrounding land uses or zoning is some single-family to the east as well as some multifamily to the east. Across Greenwood Drive, there's some single-family zoning and then some multifamily zoning as well. There are a couple of parks in the area, so you'll see some additional public zoning to the south and to the north up in here. In terms of background, as was mentioned, this is the former Roosevelt Elementary School. This property was sold by the Iowa City Community School District back in 2021. It was purchased by a private affordable housing developer. And they are requesting the comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designation for the 9.9 acres from the public designation to residential 16 to 24 dwelling units per acre in the IC 2030 plan and to medium to high-density multifamily in the Southwest District Plan. They did hold a good meeting on May 29th, and a summary of that meeting was provided in your packet. There are two criteria that we look at when evaluating a comprehensive plan amendment. The first is that circumstances have changed. And the second is that the proposed amendments aligns with other policies and provisions in the comprehensive plan. In terms of that first criteria, as I mentioned, this was the former Roosevelt Elementary School site. It is no longer a school. It was closed. The school was closed in 2012. After that closure, it was still operated as an educational center until 2019. And then in 2021, the school district sold the property to TWG. The building is currently vacant. This proposed amendment recognizes the change in ownership from a public entity to a private entity, and it creates more opportunities for much-needed residential development in our community. The second criteria is that the proposed amendment is compatible with other policies and provisions in the comprehensive plan. The IC 2030 plan was adopted when the Roosevelt Educational Center was still fully operational, aligning with that existing land use. Additionally, the plan recognizes the importance of having a diversity of housing options within our communities and within all neighborhoods. There are multiple land use goals and strategies that speak to the importance of infill development and redeveloping properties that have access to infrastructure, transit within our community. There's housing goals that talk about ensuring a mix of housing, supporting infill development, and concentrating new development in areas that are contiguous with existing neighborhoods. There's also sustainability-related goals that, again, speak to kind of discouraging sprawl and promoting infill development. Staff has received four pieces of correspondence related to this comprehensive plan amendment. One of those letters was in opposition to the proposed amendment. Staff is recommending approval of CPA 25-002, which would amend the future land use map from public semi-public to residential 16 to 12 dwelling units per acre, and the Southwest District Plan to medium to high-density multifamily for these 9.9 acres of land. In terms of next steps, the public hearing at city council has already been set for September 2nd. And with that, I'll turn it back to the Chair.
Thank you, Anne. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the city staff?
I guess I have one question that might get addressed. Are there any special considerations when moving land from, you know, a more public service to residential? Just recognizing that they're losing sort of a public-facing asset? Are there any additional conversations had from a staff level?
I think there's some additional things that we'll probably talk about within the rezoning related to kind of pedestrian connectivity is the one thing that comes to mind.
Any further questions? Is the applicant? Would the applicant like to speak?
Can you guys hear me all right? Good evening, Commission members and members of the community. My name is Jackson Taylor. I'm a Senior Development Director with TWG Development. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight about a project we believe will make a meaningful impact on housing in Iowa City. We're proposing 187-unit affordable multifamily housing located at 611 Greenwood Drive. This project is designed to serve working families, seniors, and individuals who are currently struggling to find safe, stable, affordable housing. This development will provide long-term affordability while enhancing the surrounding area. Before speaking more about the project, I wanted to introduce a little bit about TWG, who we are, our background, just to get you guys familiar with us. So at TWG, we've been around for the last 18 years, focused exclusively on building housing and the majority of that affordable housing that strengthens communities. So over those 18-year span, we've developed over 11,500 units nationally, $2.5 billion in transaction costs, and we're in 23 states. Out of those 23 states, our home base is in Indianapolis, but the first state we expanded to and actually our second-largest presence is actually in Iowa. So it's a very fond state to us, and we're here quite frequently. We pride ourselves on thoughtful design, community engagement, and long-term assets in bringing long-term assets to the neighborhoods they serve. So our project kind of has a working name right now. We are calling it Roosevelt Ridge. Roosevelt Ridge will include dog parks. It'll be designed to NGBS silver where potential tenant amenities are, including a fitness center and, you know, washer and dryer. And then there's also community amenities nearby, such as close proximity to transportation and all the things that make a project great. We've worked very closely with Iowa City Planning and incorporated. We've done a pretty extensive planning process kind of as the project has gone on. Anne had mentioned that we had purchased the project back in 2021, which was actually in the heat of COVID. Throughout that time, the economics have changed quite a bit. The project has changed a little bit. But throughout each of those iterations and those revisions, we've been very thankful to Anne and the planning team to really make sure that we incorporate. And it was actually all told a great experience because now what we're presenting, we feel really incorporates community values and the community's priorities at this time. So to make this vision a reality, we are requesting a rezoning and a change to the comprehensive plan. These changes are essential to allow for the density and layout needed to support affordability while maintaining compatibility with the surrounding area. We understand the importance of responsible growth, and we're committed to being a transparent and collaborative partner throughout this process. Ultimately, this project is about creating opportunity, giving families a chance to live in quality housing they can afford in a neighborhood where they can thrive. We respectfully ask for your support in approving the rezoning request and the comprehensive plan amendment so we can move forward in building a more inclusive and resilient future for Iowa City. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Jason. Now we'll open for a public comment. If you would come forward, say your name, and sign the paper that's there. And we limit time to five minutes. See anyone who would like to speak?
Yes. My name is Corey May. I am speaking on behalf of my mother and my siblings. And...
Take your time.
No worries. This is a size 15 shoe. And I wear this. It means, what this means is that I know what it's like to search for something that fits, not just something that looks good, but what supports you, protects you, and lets you move freely. Now Benton Street has shaped itself over decades to fit the lives of families like And the Roosevelt Ridge proposal, as it stands, feels like a shoe that wasn't made for this block. It might be well-intentioned, but it doesn't match the contours of our community. In fact, it feels shoehorned. Two sub-points here. First, traffic patterns. From Benton Street to Riverside Drive, from Benton Street and Riverside Drive to Sunset Street, there are no traffic lights. And then if you go down Greenwood Drive, the only traffic lights are at Riverside and Myrtle. And then if you go north, those are on Melrose and Melrose and Melrose Park. This is not the right footprint. Two, or the second sub-point here, there are children and elderly in the area, the children at early explorers daycare on Greenwood. And just above that, on Briar Cliff, we just don't have the capacity for that. Our second point here is we're protecting the soul of our home. We've lived next door to Roosevelt School. My mother has been there for almost 70 years. I graduated, as well as my siblings graduated from Roosevelt, and it was a sad moment to see Roosevelt close. Other side of the shoe. So this is where my family has walked and lived and grown for generations, three generations in fact. We're asking for thoughtful adjustments like moving parking further away from our property because all of the property is set toward the east side. Managing drainage responsibly, there is one drainage opening on Benton Street Hill from the north side of Miller all the way to the top of the hill. That's right in front of 600 West Benton Street where the Coopers formerly lived. And also buffering light and sound. If parking is supposed to be on the east side of the property, light and sound is going to be coming toward our property and even into our home. That's problematic. A good shoe supports without squeezing and development should do the same. There are a proposed 187 units with 113 parking spaces. If we do the math, if every person in there has a car, that's 315 cars. 315 cars for 113 parking spaces. The math doesn't math. Sub-point three, balancing size with support. This isn't a case of not in my backyard. This isn't. We support affordable housing and inclusive growth, but when a project is too big for the infrastructure beneath it, it stumbles. We've all seen what happens when you cram a foot into the wrong-sized shoe. It hurts the foot and ruins the shoe. This proposal is currently designed, does not fit the neighborhood's scale, rhythm, or infrastructure. And in conclusion, if the Ruby Ridge project doesn't fit, you must not permit.
Thank you, Corey.
My name is James W. May Jr. My dad bought the property there at 612 West Benton Street. And ever since I was five, I lived there. Well, up until 20-something, and in and out of Iowa City. There's two things that I would like to express. Number one, along the east side of Roosevelt School, there's usually parking for football games. Make a lot of money. Make a lot of money doing that. There's the fence, and then there's my mom's property. There's trash. After almost every football game, someone wanted to get rid of it. Now, I realize there's an easy solution to that, you know, garbage cans. Some people use them, some people don't. But if that's all parking and it's already going on, it's going to go on, I would presume, more. That's a concern because when I go out and cut the grass and police the area, I have to take, you know, like a garbage can or, you know, like a bag with me in order to be able to take care of the property. Number two, we don't use any, we use very little fertilizer. We try to use natural minerals for the property and to have the property fallow as much as possible because if someone wants to go out there and work it, they can have their own garden. The caveat of that is that there's walnut trees there, and there's a substance that they put out called juglone. And there's certain properties that juglone affects as far as the oxygen in the soil that the plants can be able to use. We have a variety of urbanized wildlife, from deer, possum, voles, moles, raccoons, groundhogs, squirrels, not even to talk about the birds. And we have bald eagles that, you know, come and sit in the trees there. I'm not sure as far as how this would affect our property, but I don't exactly feel that it would be, you know, like, all that good. I appreciate the time to be able to express these concerns because to me, it's Iowa City. And they have certain laws and have passed ordinances that support that. And maybe things will be changed and maybe they won't. But I wanted to be able to express some kind of interest or have someone at least consider this. You know, it's good having these things for people and affordable housing and good parking and that, but these things are already there. And I'm not sure how they would still be affected. And I have pictures on my phone, you know, of the animals that just come next to the house and lay down during the day. Someone's out there working, and they'll just sit. They feel safe. They're urbanized wildlife. I just want their voice to be heard, that's all. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mary Knutson, and I live at 725 West Benton, directly across from where they are planning to build. And I don't have a lot more to add on to what the other two men had said beforehand, but I did want to say, talk about, I'm particularly concerned about the parking. There's not a lot of on-street parking around Roosevelt. So if they have 113 parking spots and that many people living in those spaces, where will everybody park? Will everybody take a bus that don't have a parking spot? I don't think so. If they have to find parking, they have to go down the hill and find a spot down like by Miller because on Benton and on Greenwood. And when you get off of Greenwood into the housing there, you can't park in the street. Another mention I want to say is that I'm just talking about the number of people. Has Benton Street been looked at? On May 29th, Benton Street hadn't been looked at for the traffic report. And cars are going to be exiting onto Greenwood, but perhaps going up to Benton Street. And we would have to look at the dynamics on Benton Street and see what will happen. And finally, I wanted to say something about a park. When we put in the park, Benton Hill Park, and I was on that committee, we didn't have enough green space for the neighborhood. And we knew that we didn't have enough green space for the neighborhood. But Roosevelt School was in existence then, so Roosevelt School, we had for older kids, like above kindergarten and above. And then the park down at Benton Hill would be for the younger kids. So I'm concerned about there won't be enough green space for the neighborhood in the development of the part of the housing development. That's all. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
I'm Anna Bus, and I've lived in that neighborhood for 40 years. And I have watched what happens with the traffic. And the traffic is really horrendous. There is, we refer to Miller and Hudson as the Miller and Hudson 500 because people come off of Benton or off of the highway to avoid the stop signs and other things. But putting this amount of traffic on to Benton Street, and I don't see any way that it won't end up there. I don't know how they could divert the traffic. There's no way. No matter what, it's going to end up on Benton Street. And that's a dangerous enough street, the way it is. I've seen this happen time and time again. Every time something else is added, the traffic is worse. So my thing is, is that I would just wish that you would consider, if nothing else, downsizing it so there's not so much traffic. I thank you for your attention.
Last call. Commissioners, do we have a motion?
So moved? I'm bad at the language thing, sorry.
Moved to approve? Moved to approve?
Yes. Moved to approve. Second.
Did you second it?
Second.
I was just giving him the language, sorry.
Oh.
He moved to approve.
Moved to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Thank you, Chad. Do we have any discussion?
I was hoping, Anne, is it within the framework of our meeting for you to address any of the, like, staff conversations about some of the stuff like Mr. May brought up about traffic lights or where parking sat next? Sorry.
That is part of the rezoning. And right now, you're considering the comprehensive plan amendment.
I'll wait on that question then. Thank you.
And I guess the only thing I want to say is I think this is, my mother-in-law is at Briarwood right now. And that area is, the traffic is not that great, especially coming on to it. But what I want to say is there needs to be something done with that Roosevelt property. 9.9 acres of affordable housing sounds like an amazing idea to me. But I think that right now, we just want to get the changes to the comprehensive plan. Is that correct? That's all we're doing this time. And I'm in full agreement of that.
Let's call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is six to zero. We'll go on to the rezoning item. Case number REZ-25-0010, 611 Greenwood Drive, the former Roosevelt School. So this is for the rezoning. Anne?
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Okay. So next item is the rezoning of this same property from Neighborhood Public to medium-density multifamily with a planned development overlay. Again, here is the aerial of the subject property. And again, the zoning map showing the existing public designation with multifamily zoning and single-family zoning and public zoning surrounding the subject property. I think you're pretty familiar with the background at this point. I just wanted to note, and I think Jackson from TWG also clarified this, but they're proposing 170 units of housing, all of which would be affordable. They're pursuing, if they secure those low-income housing tax credits, which they are currently seeking. So their application to the state for those low-income tax credits would be 100% affordable housing project. Here is just a few photographs of the site. You can see on the left, this is the existing building. On the right, we have two pictures. The upper one shows a bit of the ravine and the woodland in the background and part of the basketball court on the right side. The bottom, the bottom right, is the entrance off of Benton Street and the basketball court in the distance. A few more photographs. Again, this is the existing parking lot with the school. And the photograph on the right is the entranceway off of Benton Street. You can see the change in topography from this photograph as Benton Street is much lower than the top of the site. Here are a couple of photographs from West Benton, taken Here are a couple of photographs from West Benton, taken from the sidewalk. The one on the left is kind of looking southwest and the one on the right is looking, looking Moving over to Greenwood Drive, the photo on the left here, this is actually taken looking at the subject property. So here is the, the ravine and the entrance to the subject property off of Greenwood. And you can see that existing pedestrian crosswalk in the foreground here. On the, on the right, this is a picture taken from the subject property showing the, the sidewalk, or sorry, the pedestrian crossing. Here is a photograph from the subject property looking east towards the, the May's home on the east side of the subject property. And here's the existing long-term care facility. And one last photograph of the, of the ravine and woodland. So again, the current zone is Neighborhood Public. The purpose of that zone is really for governmental-owned property. It allows for schools, parks, police and fire stations, other civic buildings that have governmental purposes. And the proposed zoning is a multifamily residential zone with the planned development overlay. And the planned development overlay is due to some impacts to sensitive features, particularly slopes on the property, which I'll get into in a, in a second here. There are multiple approval criteria that we look at for planned development overlay rezoning, so I'm going to go through those one by one. The first is related to density and design. The allowed density in the proposed zone is 24 dwelling units per acre. And the proposed density is 18.8 dwelling units per acre, so they are within that requirement. And again, it's 187 units and applicants working to secure those tax credits to make them all affordable. For this next slide, I'm going to actually just walk through this, looking at the planned development overlay plan. So the difference between a regular rezoning and a planned development overlay is that the rezoning is actually tied to this plan here. If the rezoning is approved, any development on this property must substantially comply with, with this plan. Anything that is a substantial change has to go through the rezoning process again. Here you can see the proposed building. It's one building of 187 units. There's a courtyard in the center. There is parking to the rear of the building. And then there is the parking that was brought up on the eastern side of the property. The building is set back 40 feet at this point from West Benton Street. And the building is, has a, a large setback due to that location of that parking lot from the eastern property line. Staff worked with the applicant to address some concerns related to pedestrian connectivity. We originally explored having a sidewalk along Greenwood Drive. That was not possible due to the ravine and the topography there. So we worked with the applicant to incorporate a north-south pedestrian connection to provide a connection from Benton Street to Greenwood, or Greenwood to Benton. There's two routes. There's an accessible route that is a little bit longer. And due to the topography, that's why it's longer, that connects Benton to Greenwood. And then there's a non-accessible entrance to that pedestrian way that incorporates stairs here up from Benton Street. Staff is recommending a couple of conditions related to that. The one is the installation of that 10-foot-wide pedestrian connection, the incorporation of a public access easement, and then pedestrian scale lighting. Related to open space, the plans incorporate a courtyard with which has a playground and an open space area as well as some seating. The dog park is located in this area here. They have incorporated screening along the eastern property line to screen that parking lot from the neighboring property owners. They've incorporated some street trees to the south. Access to the property will be limited only to Greenwood Drive. There is an access off of Benton, but staff is recommending a condition that that is only available for, for emergency vehicles. The applicant is also requesting a waiver from the height standards to increase the maximum height from 35 feet to 42. I think I covered everything I wanted to cover. Here are some elevations, or some renderings of the building. On the southern and eastern facades, the proposed building incorporates some design aspects that mimic townhomes with separate entrances. The building also incorporates a step back between the second and third stories to kind of help break up the, the mass of that building. There's design features also related to articulation, different building materials, and changes in roof lines to help break up that, the scale. The next criteria is that development will not overburden existing streets and utilities. The property can be served by existing sanitary sewer and water infrastructure. Staff did request that a traffic study was prepared as part of this rezoning. And it determined that the proposed development would result in 86 a.m. peak hour trips and 82 p.m. peak hour trips, and that the surrounding streets would still operate at an acceptable capacity and level of service despite the increased traffic. Staff is recommending a couple of conditions. One is to install a raised crosswalk in this location here. Again, this is on Greenwood Drive. The raised crosswalk would, would help to slow down speeds. That would be part of the goal and also provide a better pedestrian connection for those people walking in the community. The other condition that we are recommending is that the access drive to Greenwood be at or near a 90-degree angle, subject to the review of the city engineer. The next criteria is that development will not adversely affect views, property values, and privacy. In terms of the surrounding, the neighborhood, it's a mix. There's multifamily development, there's single-family, there's even non-residential uses with the early childhood education center and the long-term care facility. There is a single-family home that abuts the subject property, property to the east. The proposed building is set back approximately 140 feet from that eastern property line. The parking area is in that location, but it will be screened with some plantings. There's also a significant grade change between the location of the, the proposed building and the existing home. Development to the north and west is buffered by the existing ravine. And homes to the south are across from that West Benton Street public right-of-way. The fourth criteria is that land use and building types will be in the public interest. This proposal not only incorporates multifamily housing, but aims to provide more affordable housing within our community. For the most part, it protects the ravine and the woodland. And it would be redeveloping an underutilized site, a site that's been vacant since 2019. In terms of consistency with the comprehensive plan, the commission just considered that amendment in this proposal would align with the new designation of multifamily. And again, there's multiple goals and strategies within the comprehensive plan that align with this proposal related to compact and efficient development, redevelopment, discouraging In terms of compatibility with the existing neighborhood, again, there, there really is a mix of land uses. There's single-family to the north, there's multifamily to the west, there's these non-residential uses to the east and some single-family to the east. There's the existing city park to the south, and there's another city park to the north. This existing ravine and woodland would largely remain untouched. And speaking of that ravine, there are slopes on the site, woodlands on the site, wetlands on the site, and that is why the planned development overlay is required, mainly due to the impacts proposed to altered protected slopes. These are slopes that were human-made. There are natural protected slopes on the site that would not be impacted. 61.5% of the woodlands would be retained. And that, that does not include the 50-foot buffer that they are also incorporating into the, into the project. There are a couple of wetlands on the property. And the applicant has reached out to the Army Corps to see if those are jurisdictional wetlands and whether or not they would be regulated by the City of Iowa City. We do not have that determination yet. The project would not impact any of the wetlands that exist on the site. They are generally maintaining the existing buffers that exist on the site for those wetlands. The required buffers for wetlands cannot be met on this site because of the existing development, the existing driveway, the existing parking area. So that's essentially non-conforming, and for the most part, it would remain as is. And I'll just show you the, here are the, the two wetlands within that ravine. And you can see, it's, this one in particular is very close to this existing driveway. Staff has received, you know, the four pieces of correspondence that related both to the comprehensive plan amendment and this rezoning, one in particular being in opposition to the rezoning. Staff is recommending approval to change the zoning to medium-density multifamily residential with the planned development overlay, subject to four conditions. One is that 10-foot-wide pedestrian path on the eastern side of the property with the pedestrian lighting and a public access easement. Vehicular access will be restricted to Greenwood Drive. West Benton can only be accessed by emergency vehicles. Installation of that raised crosswalk along Greenwood. And then finally, the, ensuring that the driveway on North Greenwood is at a 90-degree angle with Greenwood Drive. So with that, I'll turn it back to the Chair.
I have a few questions that I'd start with. The 90-degree angle, could you bring up, like, was this second to the last? Yeah. Let's see. It was the one that had the drive and you had, showed, yeah, right there. Is the drive, is the new drive going to be currently where the old drive is?
Yeah, I think they're going to have to reposition it so it's not, so it's more at a 90-degree angle. It's kind of hard to see the location in this one. But it's going to be generally in this, in the same location. They just want it, just for safety purposes, that it's perpendicular.
All right. And then the, the buffering that's in, shown in this picture that would be particular to the May's house? How, do you know what that is, or is that for the applicant to answer? How tall that's going to be?
That's S2 screening, which is between three and five feet.
Okay. And lighting is always downward?
Lighting, the pedestrian lighting will need to be a certain height. It will need to be lower for pedestrians. And because of the adjacent single-family, they'll have to meet our lighting standards to not have any spill over onto the neighboring property.
Right. The other thing that's been brought up is the traffic. And what I, what I read, or what I, my interpretation, is the studies show that the traffic, the traffic generated by this new building would not be enough to make any alterations in the current road conditions, like more stop signs or anything like that. Is that right?
That's correct.
And is there a time that this is in place, that the city can come back and say, okay, we're going to relook at this and see what the effect is? Or do you just look to see if there's more accidents?
Yeah, I mean, for things like stop signs and traffic signals, they have to be warranted. And there's certain standards that need to be meant for those to be installed. So I, I can't say at which point, you know, something would, would trigger a new stop sign or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have questions?
I think, just sticking with the traffic patterns, can you kind of explain a little bit more detailed the decision to exit to the north rather than on Benton?
We wanted to, I think the city's policy generally is to try to restrict access onto arterials if at all possible. And since this property has another access, Greenwood Drive, that was the rationale to restrict it. And they can still meet our fire code standards. I mean, they are providing that emergency access off of Benton, so.
Do you, I had a similar question. Just, do you know how they're doing that? I mean, if someone's parking, like, in those spots?
There'll be a gate.
It's just a gate?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I had a quick question as well. I don't know if it's just too small, and I, I can't see it, but there were some concerns brought up about sustainability and the naturalness of the area. I was just confused, or sorry, I was just wondering if there's any intention or an opportunity to install sustainable planting such as a rain garden or a bio swale within that core here area? Or if that's?
Yeah, that, I don't think that's being proposed at this point. And our, our zoning code would not require that. They will be required to meet our stormwater management standards as part of our site plan review, but they can meet that through other methods.
Okay. Thank you.
I have several questions. Could you pull up the picture of the dri, of the actual driveway onto the property? This one?
Oh, okay.
That one. The driveway to the property on the right is, goes up to this new structure. The driveway on the left, if you turn real quick, you get to the childcare center. If you go straight up the hill, you go to Briarwood. So now you have not only two, but three different driveways coming out. And no stoplight and no stop signs. The only reason I know it's a problem is because we go there almost every day. And already, it's a concern when the people are picking up their kids from the daycare and all these, excuse me, more mature folks are going to see their relatives at Briarwood. And it's all really one driveway with three sections. So now you're going to have 187 units of maybe 300 people coming down that entryway to Briarwood, to Greenwood. And you're not going to have them using the Benton Street driveway, correct?
Correct.
So all that traffic is now going to be on Greenwood?
Yes.
Okay. That's my, now, is that feasible, I guess, is my question?
Yeah, based on the traffic study, the streets will still operate at an acceptable level of service.
But that, that traffic study was done before occupancy of the big unit on Benton and Riverside?
Yes.
Not Benton, but Myrtle and Riverside, before this area is, of course, is going to be built. So I'm kind of like you. Are they going to reassess it after full occupancy of that Myrtle property?
At, at, you know, I can't say how the city approaches that. But at this point, for the purposes of this rezoning, there are no traffic signals warranted, there are no stop signs warranted because of the, the proposed development.
Okay. I also have one other question. It's affordable housing 100%. For how long?
That's a question for the applicant.
Okay. Affordable housing based on what? Is this the formula we're using now?
The low-income housing tax credit prob, tax credit program, which is...
It's like based on $9,000 for a family?
It's established by the State of Iowa, not the city.
So it's still the one that really is not affordable for most people that need affordable housing?
Again, it's the state requirements.
I just want that to go into the minute so that when city council sees that, they'll see that this affordable housing is really not affordable for folks that need affordable housing.
Any further questions from the commission?
I have some questions, just if you can kind of illuminate some of the conversations that staff's had with the development team in regards to the public open space and the access agreement, sort of the intention of that 40-foot buffer and that 10-foot sidewalk. Anything you can kind of illuminate those conversations, I guess?
The 40, what do you mean by the 40-foot buffer?
The, I believe you said a 40-foot buffer toward Benton Street?
It's the setback. It's the, it's the standard setback for an arterial.
Okay. And then you've got a 10-foot public access easement, that is the sidewalk, just about abutting the building?
And this sidewalk here.
Yep. Which goes all the way in front of the building. Understood.
Yep.
So I guess my, my concern just generally is, you know, the neighborhood is losing an important asset in terms of public open space. And I just would like to know what conversations were had in terms of, you know, restoring that or providing some sort of public open space. that or providing some sort of public open space.
In terms of the public open space, are you referring to the ravine?
Either the ravine, I, I, a few meetings ago, we talked about sort of every development needing to do either a fee in lieu or some sort of dedication?
And that is part of a subdivision process?
Got it, okay. And this is not a subdivision. Were there any conversations just in regards to publicly accessible spaces or green spaces?
Well, there are two parks that are within walking distance of the proposed project.
I guess I have one other concern. As you look from, where are we? Woodside, uh, up to the school that's there. So they tear down the school, they build a three-story building that's going to look like a palace on the hill to those that are on, on Woodside. Is that fitting into the neighborhood?
On Woodside, the, the area to the north, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah. I think there, that the, the homes to the north are going to be, the ravine is probably going to obscure the building.
You can see it now, you can see the school now and you're going to add another story to that building if I'm, if I'm seeing this.
Yeah, and especially in the winter, I'm guessing, too, probably, yeah.
My concern.
Well, the benefits of going last, as many of my questions were already answered, but I'm going to tee up two. One, the basketball court always got used a lot at Roosevelt, so I don't see any kind of outdoor, outdoor activity. Of course, it's a private property versus public use. And the other part is any kind of entrance signage or otherwise. You clarified that it's a active gate on Benton Street prohibiting, but to, uh, to the earlier point on Briarwood, it is a very close double-drive entrance, which is probably going to create a little bit of confusion or some turnaround activities. So I'll tee that one up for the developer to explain.
Thank you. Any more questions from the commissioners before we go to the?
I guess, in the, just going back to the question about the two driveways close to each other, in the traffic study on?
Three driveways.
Three uses and two driveways, yeah. On page 33 of the traffic study, it showed a couple like potential site driveway improvements where it made it more perpendicular. Is that kind of what is being proposed back to the design team to renovate, revise their drawings to make it more like that?
That's the condition we're recommending to make sure it's perpendicular to Greenwood.
That makes sense. So that will separate it a little bit.
Any chance of moving that driveway?
Then you're probably into the wetland.
Any further questions?
Just about the conditions, you know, that, just, I'm worried a little bit about like codifying that closure onto Benton Street if it is, does present an issue on Greenwood. Just being able to revisit that, having that be a condition of the redevelopment, is, does that present issues there?
I think our, if you would ask our city engineer and our transportation planner, having access onto Benton would create the problems. I mean, with, with any development in the city, if access can be provided from a street that's not an arterial, that's what we are going to ask for.
Couldn't it be solved with a street, with a, a street light, with a stoplight?
I, I don't know if lighting is, is the issue.
That would be no different than Sunset and Benton. Okay.
Benton just has a lot more traffic. And it's also very steep grade at that point, yeah.
Any further questions from the commissioners? Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, John Martin with MMS Consultants. We are the civil engineering team working with TWG on this project. I'll try to work backwards through some of the questions. I think Jackson did a great job earlier of covering their vision for the property, their experience with this type of, of development, both in Indiana and Iowa and in the region. I'll start with the, the most recent topic that was brought up, so that intersection for our entrance onto Greenwood Drive as opposed to Benton. One of the constraints with Benton Street, in addition to the conversation with staff, some of the things we talked about was how do you enter? If you push, if you have an entrance at the current Roosevelt School where there, it's centered on the hill, you're, you're partways downhill. That's, that's not an ideal location. As you push further to the west, you're close to the crest of the hill. You're also pushing closer to the Greenwood Drive intersection, so that causes some, again, it's an arterial road. You, you don't want to have those two street connections or those entrances too close together. It's also at the top of the hill again, and, and to another point, some of the concerns that were expressed, routing traffic onto Benton, while I understand the concerns, we understand the concerns about all of the traffic going to Greenwood and that, that connection, routing traffic onto Benton potentially amplifies some of the other concerns from the neighbors as far as that traffic and the speeds and going up and down the hill and that traffic then going into Miller and Hudson and some of those, some of those other areas. So all of those were conversations that were had with staff and, and planning to kind of come to the appropriate solution for that case. Greenwood Drive, uh, the entrance onto Greenwood Drive is the traffic studies mentions and is one of the conditions that specified. There is an opportunity there to, with that raised crosswalk, I know some of the concerns were the traffic going back and forth if there's not a stoplight there. That raised crosswalk can help slow speed, so it helps draw, draw attention to pedestrians and people entering and exiting from those sites. So it, it serves for both pedestrian, you know, protecting pedestrians, but it also serves to help desert, or delineate to traffic and to vehicular traffic that there's entrances there, it slows them down. The parking and the building placement, so one of the things we worked with on, with staff on was the decision to place the building closer to the existing school location or do we slide it farther to the east? Or do we put the parking to the east? After a lot of back and forth and working with staff and working with the development team, we came to the decision, I think we all came to the same conclusion, that the best, the best option would be to have it in its current location. By sliding in a way, it reduces the impact of the building itself from the neighborhood to the east and to the south. I understand the concerns with the parking, that's why we're providing, as the city code requires, the screening that's needed along that east side to address some of those concerns. And lastly, I, I just talked a little bit about the, the setback from Benton Street. We meet the 40-foot setback, I don't know if you can go to that?
Yeah.
The 40-foot setback is in the southwest corner. Most of the rest of the building, all the way along the length of Benton Street is actually set back an additional 40 to 50 feet. So that reduces again that impact to the Benton Street corridor by pushing the building back further. There's also building design elements that the architect worked with, city staff on, tried to incorporate varied roof lines, low roof lines, similar to Prairie, Prairie style architecture to try to, to match the grade as you go down Benton Street. That's the, part of the vision behind the setback between the second and the third stories. And then again, those roof lines as they vary as you come down the, move from west to east and you start to reduce the building height as you approach the, the eastern side of the property. So with all that, and I guess one last thing, the wetland buffer in the sensitive areas, the existing drive is a pre-existing condition. It, it's, we're generally putting the road back in the same location that the existing drive is. If we tried to move the existing drive or the proposed entrance to a different location, in addition to the potential impacts to the wetlands, you're also going to remove quite a few trees. So, and you're, you're going to impact some of those sensitive grades that, and reference the original sensitive steep slopes. Trying to fit another drive entrance through that location is going to take out one of the valuable components of this site, which is that wooded area, the ravine. And there's paths through there, there's some, some trail systems that, that can still be beneficial for the, the residents of this project. I'm available for any questions if you have any. Jackson, do you want to say anything else?
Hello, I just wanted to just address a quick point about the Aryan median incomes and the way that those are calculated. So I, I just wanted to just make sure everyone was clear kind of about the affordability component of, of this project. So it is very geographic specific. They take the primary metropolitan area and it's based on U.S. census data each year. And they, they call it the Aryan median income. It's not the mean income, so there is no averaging or outliers skewing it way up with higher-earning income individuals, anything like that, which is promising. So once they set the median income, they do statistically, so statistically, whatever the baseline median is, we have to be below even further a percentage of that. So say that, just to do very, very round numbers, if it would be 100,000, then a 60% AMI household would be restricted to earning 60,000. And the rents themselves, the benchmark standard is, as far as housing affordability is, that housing should not take up any more than one-third of an individual's income. A lot of that's incorporated into some of the underwriting standards as well for our compliance and tenant approvals. And I just thought some additional information might be helpful to everyone to kind of help understand a little bit about what we're talking about.
For Iowa, aren't they, or for Iowa City, aren't they using the HUD formula? And I think if I remember correctly, for a family of, for two fam, for a family of two, it was somewhere around $90,000. Was, that, it's based on that figure? Is that not correct?
Yeah, so I, I don't want to say anything's incorrect without having, without a?
Family of four.
Oh, family of four. Family of four sounds more reasonable, yes, yeah. Again, without having that in front of me, I can't totally tell, but yeah.
I just want it to be on record that that is the affordability we're talking about.
Mm-hmm, yep.
The other part of that, how long will this affordability last?
Yes, so that was another point I wanted to address. I'm, I'm glad that you brought that up, too. That was on my list, but I'm glad that we got into it. So when we receive these tax credits, we're required to buy, hold, own, operate these properties for 15 years. Beyond that 15 years, we also have an additional 15-year compliance period. And so?
What does that mean?
Yep. So during the initial 15 years, we're, we're totally locked into the property. We can't, we're geared in, ready to go. Basically, if the developer, the tax credits come to us within a period of a 10-year span and if for whatever reason we were to mess up our tax credit commitments or potentially try to sell the property to someone else or whatever else, the property would actually lose its tax credits, which, through the IRS, which would be a total disaster for any deal. We have investors who come in and there's personal guarantees that get signed. That just is unheard of in the affordable housing industry during that initial 15-year period. And that extended use period is an additional 15-year period. So when IFA, the state agency, will award a project, these affordable housing tax credits, part of what they do to ensure that they remain committed long-term for, for an extended duration is they'll record a land use restriction. So there actually will be a restrictive covenant that gets recorded to restrict it very specifically to our unit account and our income levels at the property. That way it'll run throughout that period of time.
So we're only guaranteed 15 years? The additional 15 years is based on?
The, the additional 15 years will all be in the covenant, yeah.
So is it safe to say 30 years?
30, 30.
Is that guaranteed 30 years? It doesn't sound like a guarantee. If we're trying to fix the affordable housing problem, 15 years is not a long time. These are all rental units, is that correct?
Correct, yes. Part of why they deviate that in between the 15 years and the 30-year period is because, I mean, from a public policy perspective, the 30-year period is designed to ensure the long-term affordability of that asset itself, but the 15-year, the 15-year kind of lifespan is a little bit different. As soon as you surpass that 15-year threshold, the developer is actually eligible to go in and resyndicate, get additional tax credits, re-improve capital expenditures, everything else that's sorely needed at the property to, through the exact same program, and then those commitments get extended longer on. But?
So the guarantee is only 15 years? And 15, the other, the additional?
Yep, for affordability.
Contingent upon them receiving more tax credits?
Well, the 30 years is guaranteed for affordability, yes.
Okay. Okay. Next.
I'm just kind of keeping in that Lytec credit space. What would happen if you were not awarded the Lytec credits to the project? Would it essentially kill the project?
Yeah, we, so we are an affordable housing developer. We have only considered this site as affordable housing. That, that is what we do, it is our bread and butter. We, we are pretty resilient, I think. As you guys kind of saw at the beginning, we've, we've owned this land since 2021. It was in the heat of COVID, hung on, kept trying to get something going, waited until the economics turned around. We, we have historically, especially once we're that committed to a site, we've gone in for multiple rounds of tax credit applications and eventually been able to get something to work.
And those are yearly applications, is that correct?
It's correct, yep.
If I could just add one, jumping ahead a little bit, I know there was a late correspondence asking some questions about parking and it's somewhat related to that question. The recent, is it a year ago, about a year ago, when the city council passed the code amendment for the affordable housing, the parking component? And, and correct me if I'm wrong, if everything fell through and this OPD still has to be conformed to for any development, but because there wouldn't be an affordable, if there wasn't an affordable housing component in that, at that time, they would have to revert back and provide parking based on the current city code. So it would force, it would, it would trigger looking at all those parking requirements based on the current code because of that change in the original proposal.
Okay.
So just to clarify that, the parking requirements by the city differ for affordable housing?
It is zero for, if it is, it's based on the amount of affordable housing units. In this case, what's proposed is a 100% affordable housing project, so it is zero required parking. There was some reference, and I failed to mention this the first time, the first version prior to the Good Neighbor Meeting that we presented is good, at the Good Neighbor Meeting had 113 parking spaces for the 187 units, roughly 60, 61%. We heard some of the concerns, a lot of the concerns expressed at that Good Neighbor Meeting related to both traffic and then again, parking. So understanding that the city ordinance requires zero, but there were concerns related to parking, we looked at other opportunities to add. You can see right behind the northwest corner of the building, we added those two parking, parking bays, we extended out. We're still within the protected, or avoiding the protected slopes. There's some retaining walls there, but we added those parking spaces to bump the count up. I think it's now 162, it's approximately 86% of the, of the units, one per, one per 86, or an 86% ratio.
Well, while you're still up here, John, I didn't totally follow Corey May's comment about the stormwater, but I mean, obviously it has to fit, you have to meet the city's stormwater requirements and stuff, but could you speak at all to, like, if that made sense to you, like, how, how that was addressed?
So everything that's in the new building and in the parking is all going to be routed to the existing, it's already functioning as a detention basin on the property in the wetlands. That's an allowed, allowed use, it's allowed within both the, the Corps and city code. And again, that's a, still to be determined whether that's jurisdictional or not. Our determination in the report that it is that it's not jurisdictional, but as Ann stated, we need to get that confirmation from the Corps. What we've presented is based on, on a, on a presumption that we still need to adhere to the city of Iowa City's ordinance related to sensitive areas and that it may be jurisdictional. All the stormwater would be detained in that current existing area and then outletted back into the storm sewer system and get into the, the city of Iowa City Public Storm Sewer System. System.
Okay.
John, while you're still up here, sorry.
Sure.
The south side of the building, Benton Street side, the part, I guess it'd probably be the, the east, southeast corner, is that roughly where Roosevelt School is now? Kind of at the crest of the hill?
It's very close. It's, it's maybe just a little bit farther out, but it's, it's very close to that same area, yes. Generally speaking, that was one of, again, back to the building placement, that was one of the goals, was we, it made sense for a variety of reasons, but the building is primarily centrally located where the existing school.
Yeah.
I had a question for the developer. You had mentioned AMI and you had spoken of it from a lens of what standard and in terms of, you know, what your commitment affordability period were. I know that within this area are, just thinking through a planning lens, not only are the lengths of those affordability commitments, I think of large concern in our plan forward from a perspective of quality of life, but also that AMI. And I was just curious if you could elaborate on what AMI specifically you're targeting, because I have heard of some projects that are going closer to 30% and going after that extremely low income versus, you know, just a moderate low income, and I was wondering if you'd mind elaborating a little for me?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah. So there are different types of tax credit programs, and IFA tends to incentivize the different programs slightly different. They have what's called the 9% program, which generally provides more subsidy per unit to the project. There are smaller deals in general, though. You can get less funds in general from IFA, but those are more competitive. Those are the traditional, what you think of with developers trying to outscore everyone. Someone gets a half point over you, they get an award you don't, kind of a thing. And IFA's way of incentivizing that is whoever can hit the deepest income targeting as part of that, you might get a couple extra points here, you might pick a couple extra up for an amenity here or there, like, there's a scoring rubric that you can go through. But whereas the 4% program itself, you get a lot less subsidy per unit, but that's generally made up in terms of scale to development. So you'll generally see the larger developments, and they're, they've historically been less competitive as well. But part of that reduced subsidy per unit and that you're overcoming with the scale, unfortunately, you do need some of that rental revenue to be, since you're financing more with debt with that piece. So we would be doing 60% AMIs as well.
60?
Yes. Sorry, that was a long-winded way. I was trying to answer everything and loop back around to the first thing you said. I probably should have led with that, but.
I'm back. I have one more question. On this parking traffic business, what are they doing now for football season when they're coming up Benton Street to park on that lot? There's a lot of parking onto the Roosevelt lot right now.
Yeah. So we actually got alerted to that, probably within the past. Well, it especially picked up a little bit earlier this year to when we're getting some notices from the fire chief and from the city as well. So we ended up putting out, like, towing signs, everything else, and we've had drive-bys to confirming pictures that there isn't, that there hasn't been more recent parking kind of up by that gate where it comes down up the top.
But as far as the traffic going on and coming out of that during football season, is there a problem on Benton Street then, when it's university?
Oh.
When there's university event?
There's bad traffic everywhere in a football game.
Yeah. But it's not a problem for the football?
Are you referencing current conditions or opposed conditions?
I'm, I'm asking the question, how are they handling the parking, or the traffic during football season when we know that they're parking on that Roosevelt lot?
Right now.
Is it a problem? Yes.
Not pertaining to, because as part of this-
Yeah.
-parking would be limited to them, so that's-
We're talking history.
Sure. Sure. I, you're, I think they've put up the tow signs and some of the other things and then have people observing.
But the towing doesn't affect the people coming in and going out. I'm talking about the traffic flow. You're, you're saying that they, that the people that are going to be living in these units will not be able to come in and out of that, of that unit going onto Benton Street?
Correct.
They can only go onto Greenwood.
Correct.
So if it's not a problem, if it wasn't a problem for all of those football-
Sure.
-traffic, why is it going to be a problem now, that they have access to that?
Again, I think, I think what's being referenced here is whether or not there's an opportunity to have Benton Street access. I, that's all part of, we worked with city staff and engineering and transportation on those. To go back to that point, I don't think anybody wanted or intended for that to be a use. Again, as Jackson referenced, the towing was supposed to be there. The instances you're referencing, obviously game day traffic in this town, everybody is familiar with. It's seven, seven Saturdays a year.
My only concern is the traffic from that unit, 187 units-
Sure.
-coming onto Greenwood. And then not only that, having to come up Woodside onto Benton Street, and there's no stops, there's no stoplight, only a stop sign on Woodside, not on Benton.
Understood. So, and one thing I didn't mention earlier, when we initiated the traffic study at the request of staff, we consulted with staff and the, and the traffic engineers and everybody on staff and the metro, I never remember the acronym.
MPO?
MPO, thank you. On exactly what they wanted to see in the traffic study. So we based all of the traffic counts at Benton and Greenwood at the current existing entrance to monitor that traffic. All of the count locations that we took, we incorporated those based on that direction from city staff at the time. The other thing I would add, I know there was a question about the impact of the new building at, right at the corner of Myrtle and Riverside Drive. We were provided data from the city. I believe that pertained to a traffic study that was done as part of that project or in the same timeframe as that project was, was being presented to P&amp;Z and council. So they, the traffic study incorporated some of that information as well in their determination.
But of course, that building is still not fully occupied.
Understood. We utilize, again, we incorporated what, you're doing a traffic study on a traffic study.
And also, when they did the traffic study, school was not in session, so you didn't have the students?
It wasn't. We did obtain additional data from them pertaining to traffic counts that were done prior to that, when school was in session, and they incorporated some of that, those figures as well in trying to make any adjustments that were necessary. So all those questions came up, we worked, the traffic engineer worked back and forth with staff to do the best to account for those, those specific instances and concerns that you're speaking about.
One more quick clarification on the affordability, Jackson. Hopefully you can answer. You said, so the 4% tax credit program is 60% AMI, and you were saying that it limits housing costs to a third of your income? So is that, the math is basically, you take that, I looked it up, 4% household in Iowa City based on HUD is 69,240. So you take that times a third, and that's how much you could spend per year, and you kind of divide that by 12, and that would be the rent, or?
Yes, with some nuances. The concept is correct. Yeah. Yeah. Part of what they also factor into that are the utility allowances. So part of affordability, I mean, not just paying rent, your fixed expenses, your water, sewer, electric. So there's actually a formula that, and the state agency requires us to either gather from a local public housing authority, or we can actually get it commissioned by a licensed energy raider. They can study the building and calculate an average, an average tenant's consumption per unit, and they'll look at, like, some of our low-flow fixtures, some of the things like that, that way we can actually come up with a real kind of number that everyone feels good about, and that all gets reviewed, submitted to IFA, and justified. So the way that that formula would work, it would be like, say, if, if we wanted to charge a tenant more rent, then we would have to eat and pay their utility bills for them. Or, or if we would want the tenant to pay their own utilities, then we would have to reduce rent further. So in concept, the one-third, it, there's just some other things that get wrinkled in.
Other costs. And the 60% AMI, is that an average across all the different unit types, or is that just a blanket, every unit is kind of at that 60% income restricted? Or is it like, some are 30, some are 80, average is 60?
Yep. Right now, we're underwriting all at 60%. Yep. We've gone through a couple different variations of that, though, but yeah. With the newest QAP, it's a solid 60% AMI.
Okay. Thanks for explaining that.
This might be more of a question for John, but you mentioned some trails in the ravine. You know, I think, I'm particularly sensitive to, you know, just the loss of a neighborhood school, which has obviously already happened, but just some of the things that get lost, you know, with those school closings, you know, they're frequently used, especially elementary schools, as playgrounds. And reading a little bit about Roosevelt, the importance of that ravine was emphasized in quite a few articles. Can you talk about the state of the trail system in there? Is there any sort of intention of using that as an amenity for the community or the residents of the, of this particular development?
I'm going to defer to Jackson on the potential uses from, from an amenity standpoint for the, for the neighborhood and for this particular. I would say that it's in a state of, there's still a little bit of a trail through there. I think the question is, can it be, is there an opportunity, to your question, to amplify that or enhance it a little bit without disturbing the remaining portion of the, again, the wooded areas and the ravines and everything else? So I'm going to, I know we've talked about it with staff, and I think we've talked about it. I'll let Jackson answer the question in more detail.
Yep. Yeah. So it's always kind of been in the back of our mind to try to find a creative, it is a really cool use. I've been down there a couple times when I've come to visit. Part of what we are waiting to get back is that official Army Corps of Engineer, because we won't be able to touch any of that if it is within Army Corps jurisdiction, disturb the wetlands, I don't think. So beyond, once we get past that hurdle, then from there it goes to, we're, we're juggling some design constraints. We would like to, for sure, try to find a good way to do that. It's just right now, we're a little bit budget constrained, and then also, if we did make it open to the public, how do you make that accessible? Does it need to be an accessible route? Then what does that look like with retaining walls? And then it becomes a lot larger, doesn't really resemble exactly what we're all trying to do here. So it's just kind of balancing considerations to find a good use for it.
I guess, just back to the amenity, I think there's two amenity spaces identified within the building, and they're kind of, one on the Benton side and one on the northeast side. I assume those are sort of private building amenities, and then you have the dog park, and then you kind of have this large green space, and then the central courtyard. Can you just talk a little bit about the amenity structures? What would kind of be, you know, maybe more public-facing or able to use, you know, as public open green space, as one member of the public commented about just losing that with losing Roosevelt?
Do you want to talk about the public access first, and then I can jump in?
So, yeah, I, I think, obviously, anything on the interior courtyard, and I think within the building, Jackson can confirm this, is going to be private. The dog park, it obviously is along that public route. I don't know if there's an intent on their, on TWG's side, if there's an opportunity to make that open. It's currently smaller, size to be a little smaller area.
Is the, is the play structure in that central courtyard, it's kind of identified on the legend, but not on the plan?
It is. It's in the, I'll call it the upper left of that interior.
Okay.
So that's the, that's the safe play area material and the play structure is there.
Okay, understood.
So, yeah, we've looked at that. We're also strongly considering incorporating fitness, fitness facilities. We've also looked at various iterations of community gardens. I heard a sustainability comment. We're also big fans of sustainable development. I mentioned a little bit earlier, this was actually in the newest QAP, too. IFA's incentivizing us, and we'll probably wind up designing this to NGBS Silver now. That's, that's a much higher energy commitment than what was previously done, but, yeah.
Nothing for me to add. I think you covered everything, unless you have other questions related to it?
No, I think that covers it.
I'm so sorry. I know that we have talked about sustainability a couple times. Just to send me off with them, I had, from my understanding, you still have the ability down the road to entertain further sustainability efforts that would, you know, perhaps smooth concerns of, you know, our residents, such as though of James, that are concerned about loss of, loss of what we would lose by moving dirt. Am I understanding that correct? That it might not all be figured out now, but you have the room and you'd be willing to possibly entertain down the road, watching out for the nature in the area?
Yeah. Yeah, 100%. Personally, my approach has always been, I mean, especially when you're going to be locked into these projects for at least 15, probably 30 years, I mean, you're going to be, you want to be good neighbors to people when you're coming in to live within their community. You want, you each want to respect each other, you, I mean, you're, they're already there, you want them to welcome you. So part of that does wind up with a little bit of give and take. We've incorporated a variety of mechanisms of screening to try to block out some of the eyesight. We've, we've done a couple of other different measures like that before, but yes, yeah. To your point, yeah. Some things that aren't totally penciled out now, we're still very much open to working towards and moving forward to those.
Yeah, I think that's a fair assessment. And then again, the ravine and all of that area, it's, it falls, most of what you see within the actual ravine itself is the protected slopes, the wooded areas, the, the potential wetlands. So anything that would even be contemplated would have to comply with the City of Iowa City Sensitive Areas Ordinance. It's, and protected slopes in particular, that's a absolute no-go across the board. The areas that I talked about where we added the parking, that's where, and it's, I'm not sure what slide it is, Ann, but that's where those original protected slopes are for the site. The altered slopes are on the west, and then obviously in the front southeast corner where, where it was built up next to Benton Street. But the area directly behind that northwest corner, there's not really an opportunity to ever impact, so impact that. So it's, it's going to be naturally preserved, just simply because it, it has to be. There's not really a lot of opportunity to do anything with it, other than maintain it and potentially utilize it in ways that would be complementary for the, for the tenants.
I appreciate that. Just, sorry, and then I'll let you go to elaborate on that, I guess. I'm asking more from a lens of, we're, we're speaking of, not to beat a dead horse, we're speaking of these trails in the background, and what a, what a wonderful component of our community they are. I use the trails myself, I went to Roosevelt, we have people that love the nature. I understand if you have a protected slope. I'm just curious if from, you know, perhaps, and I don't mean to get too into the weeds, but perhaps from a landscape architectural perspective, if you have any opportunities to perhaps take, you know, something simple like a piece of stone or outcropping? If, I wonder if we could have a collaborative solution where, down the road, if that's the direction everything goes, you could have little enchantments there that would help alleviate some of these concerns down the road through that, even that 30-year affordability period? So I'm not, I'm not an engineer, not disturbing any soil, just if it's possible, if we can do some of those things, it just, it sounds like that's been a really common concern, and maybe there's some solutions that you can do.
Potentially.
So I understand you.
Yeah. So, thank you, that frames that a little bit, or it gives me a little context.
Yeah, I'm, sorry, it's, there's been so much talked about. I, I understand. And then same with like, that detention base, and I don't know if, in some world, it's, it's a plausibility to, you know, follow a stormwater code and have more sustainability efforts in there, such as rain gardens or bio swales to help soak up some of that water or not. That's just kind of the premise of where I'm coming from, for my questions. I just wanted to clarify.
Sure. So, so to the wetlands question, or the, the area that's potentially a jurisdictional wetlands, we're not proposing any grading in that area. We're only proposing to, to connect the storm sewer into that. That's already functioning as the, kind of functioning as a de facto detention area currently. We're just connecting a new outlet pipe into it to get it routed correctly into the public storm sewer system. So, yes, maybe there's an opportunity to do something different, but then you would be disturbing what's already a natural, you know, natural habitat in that area. So it's, you know, it's weighing the benefits versus, do you leave what's already in place and, and try to maintain and, and sustain it in that, in that format? As far as the trail, some of the things, it's certainly things that I think, if TWG's willing to, as we get into the site construction, you know, assuming everything goes forward, as we get into the actual site construction plans, those are all things we can look at. Again, subject to the determination from the Corps, whether those are wetlands or, or not.
Understood. Thank you. I don't mean to throw you on the spot. I was just looking for the, looking for the intention.
That's what we're here for, hopefully.
Thank you.
I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll open it now in a public comment. Please come forward, say your name, five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Lindsay Park. I moved to Miller Orchard neighborhood in nineteen ninety-two, and I loved thinking of my neighborhood. I live on Douglas Street. As it's, in our neighborhood, it was like, we're a little Longfellow. You know, it's like that wonderful school, surrounded by those wonderful houses. We're like a little version of that. And so over these thirty-plus years, it was sad to suddenly not see kids walking out of their houses and going to school and having to be bussed elsewhere. And that was kind of our only public thing, the center of our neighborhood, and it, it died. And so, you know, that's happened. It's not coming back. But when I think of, there are things about this that I'm so grateful for, that I mean, that the ravine is going to be still there and everything. And, you know, I, I definitely for affordable housing. But when I walked up there, kind of where this proposed stairway is, kind of diagonally, walked up there this morning and looked at the, the east-facing facade of the school, I just thought, can you, in your plans, can you preserve that concrete set of three arches and somehow, like, make it a monument that still faces east or something? Or perhaps the sidewalk that comes up, make it the center arch of there, you know, in honor of the history, the name Roosevelt, that somehow, something of that school still survives? That would, that would be wonderful. But I think that's, if I'm signed out there, is that okay? Do I?
I'll sign that one, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Park.
James W. May Jr., again. I have two questions. One is, and they're both about the ravine. Number one is, how much of this stormwater are the, has been projected to flow into the ravine? And how long is it going to stay in there? Because there's a lot of mosquitoes that come from that ravine. And not so much towards the back of the house, but backyard, there's a lot of mosquitoes. And that's dangerous. You know, I'd like to know, like, how that's going to be addressed, if it's going to even be addressed, because that is a definite concern, especially with various diseases that are out there now, and they're coming to Iowa. And some of them are, are already here. But this is something here that, oh, and Mom has already been bitten by ticks. And they were from next door, because I was cutting the grass at that time, and she got a tick, and it wasn't a, a good situation. You know, I know I'm bringing up things that are a concern of mine, but a lot of people wouldn't understand until they're there. And having lived in the neighborhood, some of these things are things in here that I've known. And we've experienced and how this would affect the neighborhood, you know, to me, is pretty paramount. I mean, Mom's ninety-seven, and I'm seventy-one, you know, got more time behind me than I got ahead of me. But still, you know, it's not just about me, it's about, like, the neighborhood. And I would like to know if anything could be done, or if anything should be done, as far as that situation goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paulus Weigert. I just have two points I'd like to make. The first one is, I appreciate your concern and your maybe attempts to rectify the traffic situation in the neighborhood, but I think it's gone too far beyond what anything you can do. And I'd just like to let you know that those of us who drive Benton Street all the time know that going up the hill, if you had to stop as people were trying to turn right into any access, would create a backup on a hill that even the city buses don't attempt to use. And then coming down the hill, if they were trying to turn left, coming off of Benton, at the top of Benton Hill, again, you're going to just end up with a lot of accidents. I drove my daughter to school there when we could use that entrance off of there. I, I think if you'd look back at accident reports from that period, you would see that, yes, there were many accidents. Also, the sun hits you in the evening going up that hill, just, just blind, too. So. The other point I'd like to raise, and I can't remember from the image showing the May's house to the east, the picture. I can't remember how the land slopes away. So right there, if there's going to be parking there and any houses that are in close proximity, you might consider, instead of an S2 level of screening, which is two to four feet high, and, I mean, I don't know how much that's really going to do as far as headlights or anything, blocking cars or all that stuff. You might consider the next level up, S3, which is five to six feet, and requires a certain amount of evergreens and, and that kind of thing. That might help screen for them just a little better. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Knudsen again. I just have a couple points I want to bring up. One, I want to back up what Paula was saying about Benton Street. I live in the middle of the hill. There's two houses in the middle of the hill. I'm right next to the park. I know how danger, dangerous it is to slow down, have cars coming behind you. I put my blinker on at the bottom of the hill when I go up the hill, to give the cars a signal that they need to slow down behind me, and not bumper-to-bumper as I'm exiting, turning left to go into my driveway. I taught two kids how to drive on that road. So they've learned how to read traffic really well, but it is a dangerous street, and you do have to watch it very well. The other question I had, I have a question. I don't know if you talked about to the airports at all. That's what was my only question, with the height of the buildings. And I know on the lines that they have, they have airport balls on top of the lines to signal to the airplanes that there is a buildings there, or there's wires there. So I didn't know if that was going to be a problem or not. So that's what I was going to bring up.
Thank you.
Corey May, and this isn't sibling rivalry. I'm the youngest, he's the older. A couple of things that we haven't discussed. At the bottom of Greenwood, there is a, a rail line. And when the train comes through, traffic backs up on Greenwood, which backs up traffic on Benton. And then all of that outflow has to go somewhere. So maybe that goes on Woodside and Oak Crest. But this egress is going to be a problem, because that train comes through somewhat regularly. And usually, it's around five o'clock. And that's where people are trying to get their children, or visit Mom and Dad at Briar Cliff. And again, as everyone has pointed out, moving from Greenwood up to Benton is problematic, because traffic is coming up at a nice rate of speed to get up the hill, and then you've got to turn right or turn left from Greenwood, and it's an unregulated stop. Number two, that is our house, in the lower right-hand corner. What our concern has been is, again, light pollution and air pollution. We've also not discussed what the height of the parking is going to be relative to our property. And I don't know what that's going to be. And we can't necessarily guarantee that runoff is not going to come onto our property. These are questions that are specific to our property, because we're the only ones with the adjoining property. So until those are addressed, we've got outstanding questions. Anything else, Mom?
Sounds good.
Anything else, James Jr.?
Okay.
All right. Then we're done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I have a suggestion. Before any of you-
Anna, do you want to say your name again, and?
What?
Would you say your name again, please?
I'm on there already. Before any of you vote on this, I invite you to come over between seven-thirty and nine o'clock in the morning, and between four-thirty and six o'clock in the evening, Monday through Friday. And I think that you should sit in the driveway that goes into Roosevelt. That should be a telling tale right there. Now, there's no way, no matter what anybody says, that you can control the traffic to not come out on Benton. And it's going to happen. We have lots of accidents over there, and a lot of close calls. So come on over, I'll make coffee.
Last call for public comments. Do we have a motion from a commissioner?
Can I take this one?
Go ahead, Chad.
Move to approve with the conditions as recommended by staff.
Okay, second? Do we have a second?
I don't know how to do this. I, I was thinking we could move to approve with the condition of, because there is a ten-foot gap between the-
Yeah, microphone.
There's a, at kind of the closest corner to the May's house, like, the parking lot is ten feet higher than the, you know, narrow band of not paved, you know, landscaping. And so if it's, if the S2 screening is only three to five feet, that might not actually screen the parking headlights and stuff. So I'm wondering if we could-
Are we S2 or S3?
Add S3.
S2, as of the-
As of now. So I'm wondering if we could, as someone suggested, bump it up to S3, so it's taller, and could potentially screen that more.
I would, I would second bumping it up to S3 as well.
Okay, so we, so-
Do we get a-
I think you got to revise the-
Motion?
Original motion.
Sorry.
So go back to Chad.
So move to approve with a revision on the conditions to increase from S2 to S3 screening.
And, and that's along the eastern parking lot?
Along the eastern, eastern edge.
Okay.
Would we be, I guess, if we're talking about other conditions, are we, would we be voting right after your motion? Or is there opportunity to discuss?
This would open up to into discussion.
Okay, got it. Understood.
Give me a second. I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Chair, if I may.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
Very quickly, as a point of clarification, is that, and I, I spoke with Jackson, this is fine, is that S3 screening for the entirety of that east side, or adjacent to the RS, the single-family zoning focused more on the southeast corner? As you go north, it's a different zoning designation. It's multifamily. I, we're open to either. I just, as a point of clarification, I want to have a clear understanding.
Steve, I think you were the one who proposed that.
Could you pull up the landscape plan?
Yeah.
I think considering the use on both long-term care and then residential, I think if we're going to have it, I think it makes sense to carry it. But Steve, your thoughts?
Moves to nothing, and then Briarwood.
Yeah. I mean, it feels like it's most impactful for that first, kind of the south half of it there, where, before it bumps, where it's the tightest.
Mm-hmm.
But even on the northern portion, now I feel like I opened up Pandora's box, the northern portion is Briarwood, so long-term care. I mean, the use, again, is quiet, residential use versus, so.
So we're going the whole, whole way? Is that the suggestion?
Is there any reason that it couldn't be done the whole way? I mean, obviously, it's probably a little more expensive, but-
I, I don't see any issue. The only, the only caution I would have is, is you approach that, especially the north entrance onto Greenwood.
See, you start to get to the hill.
I think just screening the parking.
Oh, so for the extent of the parking, which is, there's a, a little bit of a delineation there anyway?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. The, the concern was, as you start to get down into the, closer to the entrance.
Yeah, you wouldn't want it too close to the-
You don't want to have that extra height for, for visibility concerns.
Great. Thanks for coming up.
Is, are there parking lot lighting in that parking, in that area? Just as we're kind of putting conditions on to block light, I assume. There's no parking lot- There's no parking lot?
So, lighting would all have to conform, I, we haven't gotten into detailed lighting plan, but that would all have to conform to the standards for the residential.
So, do you want to go ahead and, let's make sure we have a, that, and everyone understands the motion on the table?
Version three. Move to approve with the conditions recommended by staff with amendment to S3 screening for the east duration of the parking lot.
Second.
Parking spaces only, correct?
Correct, yep.
Discussion?
You made the motion, do you want to...
Yeah, I made the motion to approve, you know, the change is difficult, but it is a use with the Lytec that makes sense for the area. Glad to see a development or reuse of the Roosevelt School grounds. We recently visited another project down on Orchard Street, so down the street from Benton. Again, it was another opportunity, did not proceed forward, but anything we can do to get additional housing in the community is needed, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would echo that. I think that the density is, I think it may cause some traffic issues with, on that Greenwood there with that intersection you're concerned about, but other than that, I mean, I think the city rightly removed the minimum requirements for parking for affordable housing to encourage it and incentivize it, and I think that's why, it's part of what's allowing this project to happen, and I think that's a good thing for our community. And there is a bus stop right on that corner of Greenwood and Benton, so it feels like an appropriate use, and, I mean, yeah, I think it's, the scale's sort of sensitively done with setbacks and, you know, even walk up kind of the townhome scale that Ann was referring to, with kind of the massing of it there, so parking's all hidden behind it, I mean, except for the, on the east side, but that's, I think, with the addition of the S3 screen, helps a little. Yeah, I, I think, in general, I think it's more, more good than bad, so I, I'm in support.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm, I have essentially the same things to say. I would like to throw in, I myself attended Roosevelt, I'm familiar with the area. This reminds me of when we had a new structure on the playground as children, they erected it. I remember there were discussions in the principal's office of the safety, it's a very real concern, it's something we do need to prioritize, but looking back on that, I think of the opportunities for growth, as silly as it sounds, that that little structure gave us as members of Roosevelt School. In a small subtle way, I think it's really neat that we were able to come together, listen to, of course, all of the different intricacies of that, and almost metaphorically honor Roosevelt by coming together, incorporating some of those things such as the S3 to help alleviate our burden, as well as the, the natural side, I just, I think that's cool. Sorry, I know that's silly with the playground, but it reminds me of that, and it makes me really, really happy to see what we can do, as long as we're, we're holding up to these standards that we've, we've come up with.
Can you, can you talk about the ravine a little bit and how it was used when it was a school? Just, I'm kind of curious. I can, we could talk, right? We talk freely, conversationally?
Yeah, I am a nature bug, so I very heavily resonated with the stories of looking out at the birds. We had a class in school at Roosevelt, they used to take us around the woods, look at, look at those little birds, pick the different leaves, take them home. That is just something, you know, I've, it's been a lot of years, and I still remember that. I still remember that ravine, I still remember that area. I'm just, I'm happy to see that it's going to, it's going to stay, we're going to chance it, and it's, it's going to be incorporated.
Was it, was it like a pass-through? Like, did people use it as a trail to get, because I know there's no sidewalk on that Greenwood or whatever it is?
I, I...
No?
I went wherever and anywhere, so...
Thank you.
I think I, yeah, I'm generally supportive of, you know, affordable housing and, and the development. I think it's just really important to note, you know, both to the development team and to city staff, that the really critical component that an elementary school plays in a neighborhood, you know, not just sort of identity, but those green spaces and those public spaces are, are critical, it's identified in our comprehensive plan. So, I, I, I do want to make sure that everything can be done to give something back to that community, whether that's access to the ravine, if that's possible, just with, you know, very simple trails, you know, there's quite a lot of green space on the front of the building. We talked a little bit about a bus stop, but, you know, just knowing that the, the parking is reduced, you know, either making a, a dedicated bus stop or nicer bus stop, I don't know what it is, I just think that it's important to kind of recognize what a community and a neighborhood loses when you lose an elementary school and that history. So, would, would love to see just continued good neighbor efforts from the development team to do whatever you can to kind of restore what has been lost in terms of public open space, and just kind of messaging to the city, you know, to, to request in, in those kind of early meetings of, you know, what can be done in terms of dedication of public open space. I think that's really important for me, and I think it's important in the, a lot of the comments we heard from the public, so I just want that to be on record as, as something that I think is really important to note moving forward.
Thank you.
And I'm finally here. I just want to say, we do need the affordable housing, and I would hate to not vote on this for that reason, but I'm still, I still have concerns about the traffic, about the parking, and that I would hope that the city will look at that periodically to see how that unit is going to affect the traffic on Greenwood.
I am in support of all this, just for what's been said, so I won't reiterate that. I'd just like to thank the public for coming tonight and for your comments, I think they moved us, and for the extensive questions we had tonight. I just learned a lot, I think we really came out with a good, a good plan, so thanks to everyone. Can we have a vote? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, six to zero? It passes. Thank you, everyone. And do we have, oh, consideration of meeting minutes? Yeah. I'm sure you've all read those?
I'm going to approve.
Thanks.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second, or opposed? All right. Planning and zoning information.
Just a few updates from the last council meeting. We had, the city council approved the comprehensive plan amendment for the former ACT property. They approved the rezoning at 911 North Governor Street and the rezoning at Monument Hills, which is Scott and Rochester, that second rezoning that came to the commission. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is these open meeting trainings that we've been sending emails out about. I emailed Commissioner Bining and Davies separately from the rest of the commissioners, because they are the ones that are required per the law to take this training, because they were appointed July first, and the rollout of these trainings has not been going that well, as some of you know, trying to get into these trainings. So, I, I guess I would just say, for the rest of the commissioners, don't worry about signing up right away. Commissioners Bining and Davies, good luck, I hope you get in.
I did sign up. I signed, I think I signed up on Saturday.
You got in? Okay, all right.
Said right away, but we still have...
As more trainings become available and the rollout improves, we'll let the rest of you know, so, that's all I have.
We do have a meeting next week?
Yes.
I'm going to miss it.
Okay.
Sorry. The agenda's not out though, right?
No. Should get it on Friday.
That's right.
Do we adjourn, move to adjourn?
Yeah.
We've done that already?
Not yet.
All right. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.